It's seven o'clock on Tuesday, April thirteenth. And in accordance with Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section twenty. The open session portion of this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcast live on Comcast channel twelve can also be viewed via live stream on WHCA dot TV and will subsequently be broadcast on YouTube. And right now I'd like to open with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll open the meeting with a moment of silence. Like a motion to approve payroll warrants.
So moved Dan Salbucci.
Second, Brian.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Justin.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. A motion to approve correspondence in the read file.
A motion, Dan.
I said, is there a second?
Second, Brian.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. First item on the agenda is the chairman's report, and I just have some correspondence that I would like to read into the record today. And the first one is from Chief Grenow, if we can invite Chief Grenow in.
He's here.
He's here, and I see him. I see him. Hi, Chief.
Hi, Dr. Howie.
Good. Date of April second, two thousand and twenty one, Honorable Board of Selectmen, Whitman Town Hall, fifty-four South Avenue, Whitman, Mass. Honorable Board. After thirty-seven years of service to this community, the last thirteen as your fire chief, it is with mixed emotions, I notify you of my intent to retire effective July ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. On January seventeenth, nineteen eighty-four, I was appointed as a call firefighter by then-fire chief Richard Brenner, my father. On September twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-two, I was appointed as a full-time firefighter promoted to lieutenant on September twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-nine, and then fire chief on September twelfth, twenty oh eight. On July ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, I will have spent thirty-seven years with the town and fire department. My tenure brought me to many good calls and several tragic calls, but the good have always outweighed the bad, and the memories from these years tell a remarkable story. I had but two primary goals in being a fire chief, to assure all my members go home at the end of their tours and to leave the fire service a little better than when I entered. I have fulfilled both those goals, the latter in several ways, and now it is time to turn the reins over. I want to thank you, the board, who have always supported me and my department, and it is truly appreciated, and I look forward to a smooth transition process over the next couple of months. Respectfully to Mr. Breno, Fire Chief. Chief, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for the thirty-seven years, especially the last number of years when you were chief. Is there anything you'd like to say to the board as you make your exit?
No, I just want to reach out and I think the board members, some of you I've worked since the beginning of my tenure as our chief and some, some over the past only few years, you've already been, been extremely supportive. I thank you for your counseling and your mentoring and your discussions and you couldn't ask for a better board than the one we have right now, and I thank you very much and and I walk away happy.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Does anybody want to say anything to the chief?
Yeah, yeah, I'll say, yeah, Chief General, thank you very much. I know my son was on the Call Fire Department for Whitman, and I believe he was in the very first class that we had with the citizens patrol, you know, as far as volunteers. And it's your thoughts and actually your previous chief of police who really made it, put it into my son's heart to become a firefighter paramedic, paramedic. So I want to thank you very much for both you and the previous chief for guiding him on his endeavor to be a good firefighter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. And Chief, I want to, I want to also acknowledge that we've known each other for a long time. And it was really a pleasure to have a chief who knew how to use punctuation when he was writing. And and I'll take, and I'll take only partial credit for that, but it was, I really enjoyed having you as chief and also having you in class a number of years ago. I think it would probably be appropriate for to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Brian.
Just a quick notation, I want to thank the chief for his years of service and all the help he's, he's given to the board over the years, but I really want to thank you for the last year and a half. The town is grateful to have you and your department for the pandemic and everything that we've gone through as a town. And we wouldn't have asked for a better service and dedication while this tragedy has taken place. So I personally want to thank you and on behalf of the citizens, thank you for what you and your department have done.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else? Yeah, Randy.
Again, just to kind of reiterate what Brian just said, I mean, the last year and a half, probably one of the most trying of your career, Tim, and without a doubt, you had this town ready to, you know, to programs in place to do the right thing by our citizens. Unfortunately, it didn't obviously work out with the state, but I don't think there's a doubt in anyone's mind that we were ready if we were called on, and that's primarily because of you and you know, I, growing up here, I, I look, you know, we've had a couple of great fire chiefs now between Chief Travers and Chief Grenow, and I'm sure that that will continue for whoever's next, but it's an awful lot of big shoes to fill at this point. So thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you.
Okay, now, now, Justin, you must have to say something, too.
Yeah, yeah, if you'd be put on the spot like that. Yeah, you know, a later addition to the board, but yeah, chief, serving as liaison with you through all COVID, really seeing all the work you've been putting in and the whole fire department has been putting in this last, you know, year plus, it's been trying for all of us, but, but glad to have you running the department and the Whitman Emergency Management Service.
Thank, thank, thank you, Justin. It'd be appropriate now for us to vote to accept his letter of resignation. I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the chief's resignation with utmost regret.
Yes, I will make that motion with a lot of regret.
Second, Brian.
Any further discussion? Well, let's vote, and we'll have one, one other vote I want to talk about, too. Justin?
Yes.
And Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. I also think it's probably appropriate for us, since he's going to be leaving, for us to start to take care of his successor. And what I would like is a, is a motion to ask for a list, a fire chief's list.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Brian.
So any discussion? Justin? Would you like to vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, too. And so that will, that will happen, that will happen in time. We'll ask for the list from the service. Okay, Mike, the next item I have on my agenda is a letter I received from Kathleen O'Tina a couple of weeks ago, and she had asked to just let it be read into the record tonight, and I, and I will. And it goes, Dr. Kowalski. It's okay, Kathleen, that, that happened a lot with me when I was, when I was, when I was growing up, that people would mispronounce my name, and I, and I know that I I have mistyped a lot to myself, but anyway, dear, dear doctor, Dr. Kowalski, I am running to express my outrage at your failure as chairman of the Board of Selectmen to rule Selectman Lamatina out of order at the March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Selectmen's meeting. After having invited the superintendent of schools and the school committee members to attend your meeting to present the FY twenty-two budget of WHRSD, you, you allowed Mr. Lamatina to unmute himself and rant for two and a half minutes about statements made by school committee member Don Byers at the March seventeenth School Committee meeting. Mr. Lamatina rudely interrupted school superintendent Jeff Simonak, just as Jeff was beginning to explain the budget. Not once did you attempt to halt Mr. Lamatina's grandstanding. I am disappointed in your failure to conduct a public meeting in a way that allows an open exchange of ideas without devolving into personal attacks. Given the constraints of COVID nineteen, procreating my appearing before the Board of Selectmen to express my opinion in person, I ask that this communication be read into the minutes of your next Board of Selectmen's meeting and very truly yours, Kathleen O'Tina, three forty-four Washington Street in Whitman. I think I, thank, thank you for your, for your comments. I regret that you had, you felt that you had to write that letter, Kathleen, but I understand what, what you're talking about. And I think I do want to allow Mr. Lamatina, because his name was mentioned, to be able to respond somewhat to it.
Randy? If I may, Mr. Chairman, again, thank you, Kathleen, for bringing this to our attention. What I would say is I would apologize to the chair to put you in this position where you have to face the brunt of Ms. Ortiz's outrage over parliamentary procedure. And I would affirm to the board that if the, if the time should arise again, that I would need to call out a department head for unfactual statements or speak upon untruthful statements by an elected official. I will make every effort to make sure I was chosen to speak before I stepped in, and I will make every attempt to try to do it in a less abrasive manner.
Okay, thank, thank you, Randy. In partial defense of Randy, but, but not of me. I didn't, Randy, I watched the Kathleen after you sent the, the letter, I watched the, the meeting again, or I watched the meeting for the first time on, on Zoom, on YouTube, and when I watched it, I noticed that Randy actually did raise his hand. I did not see that at the meeting itself. I'm not sure whether it's because of the way the Zoom universe works. There are times when we don't see everybody that's there. I didn't, I didn't see him. I didn't see him raise his hand that night. I may have missed it, or he may not have been on the screen at the time, but he did, he did try to interrupt with his hand up anyway. I just wanted to make that clear. The third letter that I'd like to, to read is about the Whitman Force Main Project, and it's a letter I received about a week ago from the, from Kevin Cleary, the chairman of the DPW Board of Commissioners. And this will, when, when it comes time for the town administrator Lincoln to, to talk about his budget, this is just some of the information upon which that, that budget was, was, was based. On Tuesday, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners for the Whitman Department of Public Works voted unanimously to move forward with Sewer Force Main Project as an estimate, at an estimated value of fourteen million four hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and fifty. The main aspects of the project are as follows: installation of approximately ninety-four hundred LF of twenty-inch sewer face morn from Auburn Street Pump Station to City of Brockton Manhole on Southfield Street Brockton. Installation of all manholes and veil pits as required in the design, restoration of the easement areas disturbed during the construction, abandoning in place the existing twenty-inch ductile iron pipe force main in accordance with all current regulations. Installation of approximately fifty-four hundred LF of new twelve-inch ductile iron pipe water line and all associated services on Auburn Street from the limits of the current Mass DOT project to the Whitman Town Line. Finally, existing pavement milling and full width overlay of Auburn Street from the end of the Mass DOT project to the Whitman Town Line. The cost estimate of fourteen million four hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and fifty is prepared by environmental partners, includes all costs for construction, engineering oversight and inspection, and ten percent value for contingency. The DPW Board of Commissioners respectfully requests that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the article for the project detailed above for the annual town meeting, sincerely from Kevin Cleary. And we'll take up that at the appropriate time. And the last thing I'd like to mention is that I did receive a voicemail from Rosemary Connolly of the Finance Committee yesterday, and she wanted to voice her concerns about the plans, if I have it right, the plans that the school department has to use federal funds to lower the assessment to the two towns. She thought it would have a deleterious effect upon the, what happens with, with our Title One students, with our, with our students that have difficulties. I told, I responded to her with a text suggesting that tonight, since we have a joint meeting, it might be appropriate for her to, to make some remarks. I have, I've mentioned this to, to Rick before the meeting, that, that at that time, when it's the Finance Committee can make comments, it might be appropriate for Rosemary to, to speak at that time. I also suggested that perhaps the school committee is, is the proper place to, to deal with the school committee's actions. I know when I saw the school committee meeting last week, and I saw the effort that Superintendent Simonak was, was making to lower the assessments to more to, to what we were expecting rather than what was originally voted on, and actually, which is still their official position. I appreciated his effort to try to deal with our assessments in that way, or in any, in any way. Whether or not using the federal money is the right way to do it is, is going to be pretty much up to the school committee and the, and the superintendent, but I do appreciate, I really do appreciate the superintendent's efforts to try to soften the blow to us this particular year. But at that time, Rosemary, feel free to, to say whatever you'd like to say. The next item on the agenda is the town administrators' report, budget presentation, and Lincoln has been waiting patiently to begin his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will a bit, but before I get into the budget presentation, just briefly, I, I'd just like to say in one sentence, I think the chief has gone now, but what a pleasure it's been, been here two short months, but it's been a real genuine pleasure working with Chief Grenow for these two months, and he's been a very welcoming presence and a great mentor on various fire-related items and others, and I personally am going to miss him, as, as will the board. And secondly, just very briefly, the town of Whitman, like unfortunately many towns in our area, has re-entered the red with respect to COVID nineteen. We were in the yellow for several weeks. There have been a few clusters largely in schoolchildren. You know, which is obviously concerning, but, but, but obviously that the fact that we're in the red, you know, may well have an effect on the further opening of town hall and as we think about scheduling of town meetings. So I'll just mention that in that context. With that, I will, just a moment, share my screen and like to go through the presentation sent around to the board and Finance Committee earlier, get into some details as desired and take questions, obviously. Just one moment. So as, as, as both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee know full well, we're preparing for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget, which begins on July first and for what will be considered by town meeting when town meeting occurs. This is just a high level of what some of the factors that went into the budget development as far as what my recommendation is for a balanced budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. So from the various departments of, of the town, from the various department heads, including the schools, there was a requested one million five hundred sixty-four thousand seventy-five dollar increase in the request. And for context, in the various departments budgets, for context, the total budget in our current fiscal year, fiscal, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one is forty-one point four million, so pretty significant expenditure, increase in expenditure requests over our current forty-one point four million dollar total budget now. The ma, the major cost drivers in terms of both dollar amount and as a percentage of the overall budget, as, as I think, you know, both the committee and the board know, knows, is the current one, one point two million dollar request as it's currently constructed and certified last on March seventeenth from the regional school district. There is a relatively large increase in the amount that is due to the Plymouth County Retirement Association, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. To be clear, each of the participating units in Plymouth County Retirement are experiencing large increases as the Retirement Association looks towards being fully funded at this moment in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-nine, but those are increases that each community is experiencing that are significant impact on the budget. And the, the other largest by dollar amount impact as far as the, the requested growth in the budget is a ninety-one thousand dollar increase in what the projected enrollment will be for the Norfolk Agricultural High School. We currently have nine students enrolled at Norfolk Aggie, but there would be an additional seven students who have requested enrollment for their, for their freshman year in high school in the coming fiscal year, and so that does have a significant budget impact if, in fact, all of those students will be attending Norfolk Aggie. So one of the, so when we have that, we've certainly first wanted to look at expenditures and reducing expenditures first before we looked at revenues, and I'd be remiss in, in not saying how helpful and a partner, what a partner, our town accountant, Ken Littell, has been in identifying possible savings and looking for possible revenues, especially, you know, as I'm, as I'm new in town. And looking at the historical numbers. So in the first instance, as I said, in, in looking to close that budget gap, so to speak, we're looking at expense reductions. So the, the, the largest decrease, you know, that we were able to find, there's six hundred and three thousand dollars in total in reductions to departmental requests. There were, and those really kind of fall into two major categories, one being expansion requests, what I like to think of as expansion requests. So a request for new staff members in different departments. I think you could certainly see the schools' request as an expansion request, depending on your perspective, but certainly in increases in staffing levels in various departments. And the, the other second piece that were reduced was, really looked closely at historical actual spending levels, particularly in expense levels in various departments, non-school departments, and worked closely with department heads to attempt to find savings in reducing appropriated budgets to the levels that are actually historically been spent and what, and what are needed. The one, what I would think of as expansion request that is fulfilled currently in this budget, again, outside the schools, if one would want to look at the schools as an expansion request, is there are two hundred, there are many, many unfilled shifts in the, in the police department. And I did, you know, working closely with Chief Hamlin, I do think there's a need, an immediate need, a public safety need to at least make some attempt in the near future to fill some of those shifts. So there is a nominal, the one quote-unquote expansion request that is included in the budget that is a significant one in any way, is a twenty percent filling of those, the total unfilled shifts, but a nominal amount to include those, those police shifts. And then, you know, so the second thing looked at was with respect to revenue, and if there's any revenue pieces, you know, first, we want to look at expenditures and whether or not we can reduce those. And secondly, possible, possibly new revenues that, that are not on the tax base. And I'll go to the next slide to show that. So this is a little bit of, this is a little bit of a complex slide to show what builds into our revenue, but I'll just bring to your attention a few major points in the comment field on the right that are the, the pieces to look at and the pieces that we adjusted as we were looking to balance this budget. New growth, that is the amount that is expected to be raised in, in new real estate and personal property taxes over and above what is being taxed now currently in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, either from entirely new construction or additions, you know, someone builds an addition on their home, et cetera. So that was originally, that estimate was originally at three hundred thousand dollars in new tax revenue. I think in working closely with our, with our assessor, our director of assessing, Kathy Keith, that it, in looking at the history there, there is three hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars in new growth that was certified for this current fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, and I do think it's safe to bump that up slightly by fifty thousand dollars to, as we get towards balance in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Secondly, the, and the two pieces regarding the cherry sheet, so the cherry sheet is stated, and the state both gives and takes away, taketh away. And so that is, so the, the projected revenue there is slightly more than three million dollars. That's based on the governor's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two proposal that still needs to go through the process in the House of Representatives and Senate. But it is, you know, traditional practice to use the governor's projected local aid number as we build our budget. And likewise, there are two, there are also expenses that come off on, on the cherry sheet on first stated, that's two hundred and six, slightly more than two hundred and six thousand dollars. The other, the other two things that I want to bring to the boards are three things, three things I want to bring to the board's attention. There is a slight, there is a wetlands protection fund. That wetlands protection fund is in fees that are charged on permits issued by the Conservation Commission. That fund has been built up to a nominal amount. I believe it's forty-seven thousand dollars approximately right now. It can be used directly to support the work of the Conservation Commission. So we did want to, you know, take a nominal amount of funds out of there to, to again, help balance the budget, excuse me, forty-nine thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars in, in the fund currently. Secondly, I worked closely again with, with Kathy Keith and the Board of Assessors, the three Board of Assessors in identifying overlay surplus. So this is one thing I worked closely with them. On March twenty-fifth, they agreed to identify a hundred and eight thousand dollars in overlay surplus that is not needed for abatements. This is a fund that funds abatements and exemptions when people file for their taxes, if they believe they're being overtaxed. Or they receive an exemption because they're a veteran or senior, blind, et cetera. There, there have been funds that have been built up over the years there, and I do think it's prudent, again, in an attempt to balance the budget this year, to take a hundred and eight thousand dollars there. So what all of that boils down to, again, with expenditure reductions, some expenditure increases, again, primarily being the, being the nominal increase in funding unfilled shifts at the police department. I should also note there are funds in here for nominal pay increases for both union and non-union staff. The five town unions are, we are in negotiations now, so I don't want to get into many, too many specifics about the amounts that are built into the budget, but there are nominal amounts that are built in there for pay increases for union and non-union staff. And then one other thing I, I want to mention, and certainly happy to take further questions about it. You know, for, at this time or future time, there is a, I would say relatively nominal increase in the projected amount. And again, just my request, recommendation for the salary for a assistant town administrator. I do believe that the market indicates that in order to get the right person for the town, that the town may want to consider paying slightly more or considering paying slightly more in that position, but to be clear, and hopefully goes without saying, if I hope we're able to find the right person for a lesser amount, but it did include a slightly increased amount in order to increase the pool a little bit when that goes out for posting. The bottom line behind all those slight budget increases, significant budget reductions from departmental requests and tweaks, I would think, you know, we can call them tweaks to revenue, is that in order to bounce the operating budget, supposed to the cap, the capital budget, five hundred ninety-four thousand dollars would be needed in certified free cash. That is more than half of our total certified free cash. And again, briefly, I know the members of this committee and the board know, but free cash is the, what remains and what is certified by the state each year on a yearly basis. But free cash is the, what remains, what is certified by the state each year on a yearly basis, what remains from. Monies that were appropriated in the previous fiscal year, that is to say fiscal year twenty twenty, and were not needed. Amounts of revenues that were, that were projected a certain amount and which came in over that amount. And so those are the two components that go into free cash. It's a one-time funding source, is not ideal to be used to, to balance the budget. We would typically want to be, be wanting to use a one-time funding source like that for one-time expenditures, that is to say, capital expenditures. But under this scenario now with where we are, it would be using five hundred ninety four thousand dollars in free cash. I just want to briefly touch on. Again, the two largest drivers, both on a percentage basis and a dollar basis for what is driving the. Requested and the expected increases. So this, this chart shows. The school assessments, both Whitman Hansen, Social Vote Tech and Norfolk Agricultural High School across the past ten years. So. Again, across not those three schools, it's a one point three million dollar increase from the fiscal year twenty one appropriated amount. And to twenty two. As the boarding committee can see, that amount has increased at a pretty. Significant clip over the last five years, especially when one compares it to the, the previous history in, in the five years before that. And likewise for pensions and the pension obligation to Plymouth County, the line is similar. You know, a hundred and ninety six, a hundred and ninety seven thousand dollar increase. And in particular, over the last five years, that has increased pretty significantly, especially when one compares it to the historical increases. I just want to touch. But before I mention one other thing, I want to touch on the free cash usage. And the free cash, free cash usage, we talked, we spoke about, I spoke about the five hundred and ninety three thousand dollars that would be needed in our. Certainly more than one million dollar certified free cash to balance the budget. The effect of that currently, if, you know, if the budget stays at the, at the place where it is at this moment. Would be an impact on our capital plan. So we have in our, in free cash that's identified either for capital plan or. Either for the capital plan in fiscal year twenty twenty two, or the top two items here are fiscal year twenty twenty one costs. That is forty seven thousand dollars, relatively small amount for prior year bills to pay prior year bills that town meeting needs to approve to pay. From prior to fiscal year twenty twenty one and a. Fire department supplemental appropriation to supplement the currently appropriated monies. All of that together would indicate that the capital plan as requested here in, in, in front of you. That capital plan sums out to nine hundred fifty six thousand dollars. So. Remember, as a reminder, there is slightly more than one million dollars in certified free cash. If, if the budget, you know, stays where it is. The. We would not be, we would not be, would not have sufficient free cash to fund what we want to do in terms of capital. If the budget comes down some, we would be able to fund the entirety of our, of our capital program. It, it's not ideal to use the entirety of our free cash, which is what we would be doing. But nevertheless, you know, it's a one-time expense or capital or, it's a one-time revenue source, our capital expenses are, are one-time. Our one-time expenses. So it would be an appropriate use, even if we were using the entirety of it. However, again, if the budget does not come down some in terms of operating, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to fund the entirety of our capital plan. I just wanted to mention. One other, one other item as far as what the budget looks like. So. What is presented to the board and the committee is what, what's termed a consolidated budget. And I would actually call this a semi-consolidated budget or a partly consolidated budget. So. Traditionally, the town, as, as the board and committee knows. Has appropriated each and every budget line at town meeting. Most, if not all, towns in our area and actually throughout Massachusetts do some type of consolidated budget. And what that, what that would look like is in the next document that I'll go to. Is this. So there is still in the third document that, that the boarding committee has. There is still the complete line item by line item breakout. With the traditional information that's been contained in article two, the operating budget. And in fact, as an inform, on an informational basis, actually some more information there than what is traditionally been in there in the, in the report, in the budget report. That you folks have. What would be suggested by myself to be recommended, to be considered at town meeting would be this semi-consolidated. Budget. And what that means is that each, so rather than line item by line item, each department. Would be appropriated both in salaries and expenses. So for example, rather than. Maybe a good example might be the town accountant's office. So typically, the town accountant's office. Has. See, six budget lines. Salaries for the accountant, salaries for clerical. Certification stipend, those are the salaries items, and then three expense line items, an office supplies account. A miscellaneous expenses account and an association dues account for the accountant. What is showed here and, and, you know, as for the, for town meetings consideration, for the boarding committee's consideration. Is to, would it be to appropriate these monies by salaries in the one line and expenses in the other. And this would. Achieve, I believe, several efficiencies, but at a high level, and obviously, again, happy to take further questions about it. But at a high level, it would allow throughout the year. For the management of the town to, and specifically, you know, the board of selectmen and, and frankly, you know, through, through the board to me. At your direction to make adjustments. So for example. If, and if an employee leaves and. And, you know, they choose to retire, for example, and a new employee is hired. Almost always, it would be typically at a lower rate. Right now, it would require inter-fund transfer to adjust those monies to, you know, to, to reflect the new salary. What this would allow is, as long as that employee was, you know, continued to be, for example, in the town accountant's office, this would allow that flexibility. Without an inter-fund transfer. To, you know, to, and that management flexibility to, for example, lower that employee's salary. Because we would be, you know, hiring someone at, at a lower rate typically. So again, obviously happy to take any questions about that or any other aspect of the budget. Obviously, this is. You know, this is sort of the, the start, and not the start of this conversation, but sort of the end of the beginning of this conversation, not the end of it. And appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Lincoln. Does anyone on the board want to have a comment or any questions of Lincoln with respect to what he just presented?
Yeah, Kyle, I do, I, I have a couple. Questions if I can. Do you think it would be appropriate if we were to go with the type of article two with putting all the, all the salaries together and stuff like that? To put a percentage? So people know what the percentage of increase would be in, in that, in that salary line item for a particular department? And if there is a question on why it's such an increase, we could have the, you could give them the answer like we talked about today. And second of all. The amount of, of the previous thing that you were talking about, the amount of free cash that we would have left. That you want to use. I guess what we need to know from the capital committee. As far as how many items they approve or they recommend that we go with. And are they listed? In your breakdown and are they approving it or would like to see it? But yet we can't afford it or do they prioritize on what needs to get done? And I guess. The chair of the capital improvement committee would probably be best, you know, Dave Derr to talk about something like that. And also you had for a capital project, a new fire apparatus. Didn't last year, the, we eliminated the reserve fund for, for the police and fire department. So that the monies, the, the ambulance account that comes in. It goes right to the general fund, but yet they reserve a certain amount of money to replace equipment. Wouldn't that monies be used instead of free cash?
So I can.
Questions.
Sure. Yeah, no, I can tackle a few of them and, and I'll, I'll leave it up. I'm happy to help, obviously, but I'll leave it up to Chairman Cudera regarding the, the capital questions, but I'm here to help. So regarding the percent increase in the proposed article two, yes, absolutely. You know, if that's something that. The board or, you know, would want to see on the warrant, yes, absolutely. It can include that. Great idea. If that's the board's will. The, regarding the reserve fund, so the fire reserve fund was closed out. At, at last year's town meeting, the remainder was, is, is being returned as free cash. So that is not a funding source for fire apparatus now. So. Yeah, that, that, that.
Realize that.
That ambulance, yeah, correct. So. So I, I don't know, Chairman Cudera, do, do you want to, I, I'm happy to talk about the capital issue or would you like to? Take some of that conversation?
Yeah, I'll take some of it. So at our last meeting, the committee voted in favor of. All the capital items with the exception of the DPW building, which we decided to pass over. Based on communication that we received from the DPW, it's likely the feasibility study for that project will not be, well, it, it hasn't been available yet, but won't be available. Until after town meeting. The other item that we have not yet voted on was the high school fire panel. We had a few more questions in regards to that. And in terms of the consideration for, for our votes. The warrant article does not. Does not always, I did not always identify the funding source. So our votes were strictly on need, not based on funding availability or funding source. And I think that's, I think that answers the question.
If I could just add one, one thing, actually, just before this meeting was at a meeting of the Department of Public Works Commissioners. To discuss both the sewer force main project and what the projected and proposed funding might be at town meeting. We also had a quick conversation on the proposed Department of Public Works building. The feasibility study. Is still outstanding on that. And while the board, while the commissioners did not take a vote when I was there anyway, on it. The consensus from the commissioners there was, was pretty clearly that they would be pursuing. The funding for the new DPW building at a future town meeting, not at this most. You know, not at this upcoming meeting.
Thank, thank you, Lincoln. Thank you, David and Dan. Any, anyone else have anything that they would like to ask Justin?
So, so thank you, Lincoln. This, I know you put a lot of work into this. The, you know, first takeaway, I really like the idea of a consolidated budget, although I, I do anticipate getting some pushback. From the public unless we're very clear that more information is available. I think at town meeting, you're going to provide that seventy-five page packet of. Software sheets. So that will be helpful. And, and yeah, consolidating the expenses. You were able to reduce a lot of the expense lines down to closer to the actual spend, knowing that if. You know, individual, you know, vehicle maintenance lines come up short, but they have extra money in mailing, we can. Within a department, they can adjust. So I, I do really like the idea of the flexibility that gives us. If we can get into some specific. Items, though, while the finance committee is here, I'd just like to get their opinion on reducing the reserve fund transfer line to thirty five thousand. I know that was one of the. Recommendations in the budget that has historically been around fifty thousand. I, I know that. Hopefully, some of the, the added flexibility of the consolidated budget should produce fewer reserve fund transfers down the line, but. It was just something that jumped out to me at first.
Okay. If there's no other selectman that wants to, wants to chime in, Rick, this might be a good time to transition over to you. And to handle Justin Evans's question and maybe ask your, your board if they have any comments or questions of Lincoln at this time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take this opportunity to, just very briefly, to say that we really appreciate this opportunity. We've been waiting a while. Obviously, to meet jointly. It's something that we have done, you know, ten times in the last three years, I, I noticed. So. This board, just for the, you know, just for some general information, has been meeting. With every, every week since the end of last summer, we met with all town departments. Through the winter and into January, and both our boards have found ways to deal with the, you know, the challenges of the pandemic. The, you know, the transition of a new town administrator, some new faces in town government with department heads. Our biggest hurdle to the, to the finish of this budget seems to be the district, the school district. And the final number coming out for the assessment. So we all know that we don't have all the information really right now to. To get to finish the budget. I do appreciate the work. That the town administrator has done with, with, you know, the help of our. Of Ken and to get to this point. I, I, I am a little concerned about the approach to a consolidated budget. For presentation to the town meeting. Personally, I, I, I think that. The very purpose of, of having an independent body. Like the finance committee is to review expenditures. And I think we're almost slightly insulting the intelligence of the voters. By presenting consolidated budget in lieu of the article two. I, I understand, Lincoln, that the, the reasoning. I, I just think that with, with a forty one point four million dollar budget, I think we need more detail for the voters at town meeting and not less. So. That's my own opinion. Obviously, this is a lot to digest. This, we received this information less than an hour before this meeting. So. I think it's something we need to have more of a conversation about. But I do understand how with respect to Justin's question, that the reserve fund would need to be less. Because a lot of the reserve fund or line item transfers that are associated with the reserve fund are not going to be needed under a consolidated budget. So. It, it certainly makes sense that that number is less, but to me, it doesn't make sense to make it less personally. So. Like I said, I, I certainly don't want to disparage the new town administrator for proposing this approach. I, I think the information is, like I said, a lot to digest. And I think that we need to, you know, go back and, and take a, take a hard look at, at using it, you know, the consolidated budget approach. For presentation and recommendations from the finance committee. We've been working on this budget for over a year. And for twenty days prior to town meeting to change the way we're going to vote recommendation, I think is pretty drastic. So. Like I said, no disrespect to anybody that's worked very hard on this budget, but those are just my own initial reactions. So. I certainly defer through you, Kyle Chairman, to make sure that the rest of the committee is heard from.
Right, Rick. The, the, the selectmen are going to be meeting again next week too, to. To have spent a week digesting the presentation tonight at the same time. And we won't be voting the, but we won't be voting the warrant articles tonight. We'll be. Starting to do that next week, probably. I have to admit that when I first saw the, the consolidated five-page budget. It's, it, it struck me as. Large departure from the way we usually do things and knowing the, knowing the citizens of our town, departure isn't something that they, they usually do from the town. Or, or from procedures. On the other hand, and so I, I may have had a similar kind of reaction to yours. On the other hand, when I looked at the seventy-four pages of backup, I, I have to, I have to agree with Justin that it gives the town. Town members who will have access to it as they come in, they'll be able to pick it up, more information than we've ever given them before. And in a format that's similar to the, to the format that we had before. So I, hopefully what can happen is there'll be a, a salesmanship job and, and Lincoln's going to be the, the salesman. He'll be the music man at the, at the town meeting and he will be, be selling the format. However, he will be directing people also to the, to the information that he's, he's supplied. Um, however, he will be directing people also to the, uh, to the information that he's, he's supplied, which, actually is more detailed than what we've had before. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the way we're going, although I know it's going to be hard to, to, um, for some people to adjust to it. I, I am, uh, in, in one of the, the motives behind it is to allow the people that we pay to manage their departments to manage their departments. To be able to, um, to move things around. And that's at least my take. Um, if there are any, Rick, if there's anyone else on, on your committee that wants to speak, it'd be a good time to, to do that. Yes, David.
Thank you. Uh, uh, just to put things in context, uh, and what wasn't included in, uh, the finance committee chairman's, uh, statement was that, uh, over a month ago, when, uh, the new town administrator started, we, uh, essentially the committee essentially, uh, uh, delegated the activity of creating a balanced article to, to the finance, to the town administrator. So I don't think it's really fair to say that this was, this is much of a surprise to us. Um, you know, the, the warrant, the discussions that we've had over the past month is also that it may be in a different format. So, I just want to, I just want to add that little bit of context i- in, in while we're discussing the article two.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I also, I also understand Lincoln that you have had some input from, um, at least some members of the finance committee as you were working on this. I, I did, and it was appreciated. Yeah, um, particularly, you know, with some of the, the, you know, deep details of this budget that, you know, I've been familiarizing myself with for the last two months. And the institutional knowledge, you know, that members have had and have provided to me of both, the board and the committee has been invaluable. If, if I could, Mr. Chairman, um, just a, a couple of quick things. I just want to mention regarding the reserve fund, um, the, the part of the intention to, in, in looking at the reserve fund transfer is not directly, in fact, a lot of it for me is not in any way directly related, to a proposal for a consolidated budget, but rather a recognition that, in the past several years, similar to, as I mentioned, many, um, many line items and many budgets throughout the budget, just looking at historically what has been spent there and what has been needed, um, has not reached the fifty thousand dollar mark. Um, so that it was really more based on that, to be clear. And secondly, um, I think it's, also based on a recognition that hopefully, you know, some of, we're coming out of some of this uncertainty with related, related to COVID. You know, I think if we were going into COVID, if this was a year from now, I, I know as far as I'm concerned, I would not be recommending a reduction in the reserve fund. Um, because we don't know, we didn't know what was going to be happening, but hopefully the need for some of that, some of that uncertainty, um, will be diminishing here over the coming year. Um, just want to mention two other quick things, which is, you know, this, the seventy-four pages that we were talking about, um, I, I certainly commit, you know, to, my time here that at a minimum, you know, a town meeting would always receive at least this. And we can do more, you know, I mean, there's no, there's no piece of information. Um, this is a report out of our, uh, uh, accounting system that, you know, certainly spent some time tweaking to try and make it as useful as possible to members of the public, to the members, members of this board and this committee. But, um, there's no, there's essentially no limit to the amount of information that we can provide to people. Um, and have it, as Chairman Kowalski mentioned, you know, be more than perhaps what was, um, provided in the past. So, um, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, any, anyone else? Yes, Rick.
I'll defer to Rosemary and then you can come back.
Uh, did you have your hand up, Rosemary? I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
It's okay. Um, as much information as you give, you, you take control of the citizens. I think we've had a, when you just give a department number, whatever, there are times that citizens don't agree with, uh, a pay of one person or one, um, situation. We had that situation last year on the floor. Um, so I'd like you to consider that maybe the citizens might want more control over where money goes and how it's spent.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Rick.
So, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the, the, my question was kind of a follow-up from Rosemary's comment. So with respect to say, for instance, the assistant town administrators salary line, um, you, you said that there was some adjustment. Uh, we had in the article two ninety, uh, thousand four fifty-two. Could you tell us what the new number is?
Yes, so, so the new number is envisioned as, again, as an absolute ceiling. Um, and again, just as a recommendation or a, a proposal, I should say, for me is a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, again, that's based on looking closely, um, both before being here and since being here even more closely at, what the market, um, would, would bear, in my opinion, for the best person. But again, that's my opinion.
John?
Um, yeah, I just want, I wanted to comment real quickly on the consolidated budget. Um, I, I do think, everybody can achieve what they're looking to achieve here. Um, in, in response to Rosemary's question, um, if somebody wanted to challenge a line item and, and Rick actually, um, if somebody wanted to challenge a specific salary line item, um, it is outlined in the seventy-four pager and they could just challenge that salary line, particularly in the condensed budget. So if you wanted to challenge the, um, you know, the assistant town administrators, you'd just challenge that one salary line item and then you would have the opportunity to discuss it on the floor on what, what particularly you're challenging within that one line item. Um, so I think, you know, with the managerial control that the department heads will now have with the condensed, um, you know, budget, I think it's worthwhile and, and the, you know, I think hopefully, um, Lincoln that, this wouldn't just be available as people walk in the door. Um, I know in the last hour and a half, I've been, crunching my brains out trying to go through this. Um, I would hope that this would be available several days in advance, maybe online, or something along the line. So, or even if somebody could go pick it up somewhere so that they could have day, you know, there are many, taxpayers that really won't matter, but there will be some that are going to want to review it, myself being one of them.
Yep. It's absolutely, but yeah, I obviously wanted this board and this committee to see it first, but yes, it will absolutely be up online. And available to anyone who wants.
Rick and then Rosemary?
Yeah. So, so my question, just to follow up, so the seventy-four pager, uh, would the finance committee be making recommendations on the contents of that, document?
Lincoln?
Is, so you certainly could, you certainly could. Um, what, what would, if, the board of selectmen agrees that a consolidated budget is what the board wants to see on the warrant, then the, those recommendations would roll up into a recommendation column on the warrant. But certainly from my perspective, you certainly have the authority to make recommendations on individual lines. Um, and then how that is represented. And then that would be represented in the seventy-four page document. And it would further be re- represented in a rolled up fashion on the town meeting warrant. If that rolled up fashion was what the board of selectmen chose to put on the warrant.
Okay, so just for clarification, the finance committee would then take the seventy-four pager and, vote recommendations as we have similarly to article two. And then those, tallies are going to be used for the consolidated budget?
We, well, I think the finance committee can vote how it would like it to. I, I would like to. I, I would recommend it would probably, it might be more efficient, to vote on the tallies and the five pages. Um, just as an efficiency thing, but of course, but the finance committee can vote, how it would like to vote. Uh, but, but, but how it will be represented in the warrant itself, from, in my mind, would be reflective of how the board of selectmen chooses to put it on the warrant. Does that make sense?
And yes, and that's a discussion we'll be having next week. I believe, Rosemary.
Just a, a point of clarification. So, if a department can move money around and we change it to this new format, and the citizens vote out an amount, a salary, they didn't want that extra person there, whatever their choices, the department head can then just shift money around, and supply that or do something else, correct? That it doesn't have the impact that the voters intended. There is an option to override the, voters' choice.
Uh, I think it would be difficult to do that frankly, um, because it, but, but to be clear, by department, it would be, a salary line voted and an, and an expense line voted. So, um, especially in a smaller department, I think that would frankly be next to impossible. Um, I, because, if, for example, you know, one wanted to, um, to pay, it's the town meeting wanted to pay a particular, in employee more, those monies wouldn't be available unless another employee in that department, left, right? So, because the monies wouldn't be available, right? For example, it, I, 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 I look at it more as flexibility, it win, for example, um, an employee retires. And the new employee is, is paid less, you know, the, the, so I don't know, does that help answer your question?
No, I, I, I think, um, on the town floor last year, the citizens of Whitman came very close to eliminating a position, or eliminating a person's pay, um, out of protest. Um, they weren't satisfied with, uh, those people weren't satisfied. Um, but if that person was the head of their department, they could have just, given themselves and, and eliminated other staff under this, um, particular structure.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting Lincoln to, for an answer to that.
Uh, yeah, I suppose, I'm sorry. Uh, I suppose, yes, that's true. I mean, it's certainly, from my perspective, it certainly wouldn't be entirely up to the department head. I would certainly think, um, there would be other people, who would have some input on that, um, particularly the board of selectmen. If the board of selectmen is the appointing authority, for that person, um, you know, I mean, it, the board of selectmen is the appointing authority and so it's not entire, you know, it's not, within most department heads authority to do that. For, you know, in that situation, for example, right? So in, in most departments in town, the board of selectmen is the appointing authority. And so, that would not be possible without the, without the approval of the board of selectmen, frankly. Does that, does that help?
No, I'm just trying to ensure that this, that this, that the, the will of the citizens are, you know.
Okay, any, anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Randy.
Uh, I, I think it's pretty, uh, what we should point out is, uh, this idea of consolidated budgets, uh, although the appearance of this, uh, throughout all town departments is new, it, it is, it is not a new idea in general. Uh, if you look at the school district, it's exactly what we do with the school district. Every year we provide a sum of money and then say that we, it have, uh, proper personnel, to fund that, to manage it. Uh, Ms. Conley's scenario, you, you could use that with, uh, the superintendent. You could say the superintendent wouldn't try, uh, give any education and, and wouldn't, uh, hire any teachers. He'd give all himself all the money. Uh, again, that i- is extreme and it would be stopped. And I think, uh, those situations would, would happen within our, our own town departments. What we're doing is we're putting the onus on the managers to manage properly. Uh, if you look at the school budget last year, if lines are, the, the most important thing is to follow what's in a line, they had almost five million dollars of line item transfers last year within their own budget. So, was it that they budgeted wrong? I doubt it. Some lines run over, some ri- lines run less. But that's why you have proper administrators to handle those things and you give them the flexibility to budget their, their departments properly. Uh, I think it's a great idea. Uh, like many people have said here tonight, it's a little bit of sticker shock. Absolutely. I think with the seventy-four pages that, uh, Lincoln has supplied, we are providing more information than the townspeople have ever seen. Like Mr. Galvin said, it's going to be a matter of getting that information out, making sure people can see it. Seventy-four pages is far too much information to review within the fifteen, twenty minutes that you might get to town meeting early. That's going to be on us, the onus on the board of selectmen and Lincoln and, uh, probably on, uh, our IT director to make sure it's up on, on the website and accessibility to that. But as far as an ease of a meeting, I, I don't think this is the farthest thing of trying to take any rights away from, from voters or, pull the wool over anyone's eyes. The numbers are there. We've provided the totals. Uh, I do agree with Dan with percentages. I, I think, I think we're getting a little too focused on the appearance right now and we probably need to, maybe talk a little about the actual budgeting issue in the room of, there's some money that we're going to have to give one department and completely wipe out a capital plan. Uh, that and the next week could work itself out. And I think we have a pretty solid budget to put forward to, to the voters. And I would commend Lincoln and Ken for, for their hard work.
Thank, thank you, Randy. Uh, yes, Brian.
I have a, just a quick, um, comment and then a question for Lincoln. Um, if we went forward with this, uh, this year and, um, I'm looking at beyond, um, a suggestion might be that, uh, if we could on our website have a, an area where we, uh, you could, uh, let's say a dropdown, uh, scenario and then let's say somebody wanted to know that that's a bolts of, uh, the, uh, the assessor's office, you could click on that and then those multiple lines be right there. Uh, that they could read the print off or, um, to study for themselves, to figure things out. So it would be an ongoing thing going forward. I think that might be helpful. Um, and the other thing is, uh, if you know how many other surrounding towns, operate with this consolidated style budget?
Lincoln?
I, I, I haven't done an exhaustive survey, but I am familiar with the budgets of, I can think of a good ten towns in our direct area. And all of them have some form of consolidated budget. Many of them, in fact, all of them that I can think of in those ten, their consult, their budgets are more consolidated than what's before you now. Um, this, I, again, I would sort of call this a semi-consolidated budget. But, uh, there is, there may well be a, a town, uh, i- in our area, that does not do a consolidated budget, but most if not all do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, Dan.
If I can, yeah. Uh, a couple of suggestions. First of all, seventy-four pages, it doesn't have to be seventy-four pages. You can put a couple of different line, a couple of departments on the same page, you know, so it doesn't have to be seventy-four. As far as distribution, we can always have them printed up. And on a table on election day, prior to town meeting. And Rick, to answer your question about, uh, looking at the consolidated article two, if y'all looking at the, the, uh, part of the seventy-four page where if you look at a line item and you disagree with it, and say it's a, a ten thousand dollar disagreement, you can go to that line item in the consolatory, part of the budget, the consolatory form and minus your recommendation by ten grand. And then you can bring that up, and say, go to page thirty-three, we, this line item, this is where we're getting the ten thousand that we disagree with. So I mean, it would be very easy at town meeting to be able to do that. Um, now, and that's my way of, you know, thinking about, uh, being able to solve the issue about, you know, getting the information out to the people.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Yeah, Rick.
Uh, yes, Dan, yeah, in response, I, I would suggest that, you know, we go into town meeting as we always have, um, you know, with a, you know, with a, an agreed on budget and not making recommendations from the finance committee on the floor. So, you know, that's why this is a collaborative effort and I would hope that by town meeting, we all agree with the board of selectmen, the, uh, town administrator, the, the finance committee and the accountant, uh, that this is the budget and this is what we were going to put forward collectively. That, that's what my hope would be.
Well, I, you're certainly, certainly right, Rick. That's a, uh, that's a consummation devoutly to be wished. Uh, sometimes it doesn't work out that way that we agree on everything, but I think that it, that has to be a goal. I think that, uh, I think Lincoln, at, at our next week's meeting, maybe there, there needs to be, a kind of an introductory, um, instruction about the way, uh, consolidated budget reporting, works in some of those times that you're talking about. Because the, the, the people have to be educated in order for us to be able to use. both the amount of information that Randy rightly has described as as more detailed than than before and what looks like a very a very quick summary. Going to make it very simple for the town moderator to go through the 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 summary article too. And so does anyone have any questions on the the Finance Committee's salaries and expenses? And somebody's going to raise their hand and say, yeah, we have no idea what that means. That people, that person is then going to have to let us know which one of the the items on the the larger the larger budget description it refers to. But what that's going to mean, it's going to mean it's going to be, it's going to actually be like an old town meeting. And I think we're trying to move somewhat away from that. Is that right, Lincoln? Is that your vision?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think I do think it's it's a, I do, in my humble opinion, believe it's a best practice to have some type of consolidated budget. And and I do think, you know, most if not all towns in our area have done that for a reason. You know, yeah.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you how I felt when we regionalized back in 1991, even though I don't want to go back to that time because I can barely remember it. But I can remember how I felt when, as a as a member of the K through eight committee, and we had to submit our budget to the town of Whitman, line by line, what a struggle that was. I can remember how easy it was the year afterwards when the schools presented the town with a figure that you either voted up or down. It allowed the schools to manage themselves the way Randy has described. And and by and large, if there's if there's a school, if there's a school committee that pays attention to to what's going on in their in the in their elected offices, then it can work. It can work. We've seen some time, we've seen some occasions over the past few years, obviously, where where it didn't, but I think we're past that now. And I do think opening up next meeting with some sort of an instructional video or something, I don't know. I don't know what you want to do, you can work on that for next week. I think that will will help out, but I think we're going, I think we're going in the right direction. I think John and and Randy have a have a have a good grasp of it. I I have a feeling that David has a grasp of it of it also. And I know that Noon does because he and I have worked together for a long time, and I always agree with almost whatever John Noon says. Besides that, and and Kathy, I like your, I had a detail too, just I'll try to be good in in the future and 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 not let people run away with the meeting. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Yes, Rosemary.
It's a request, actually. If if you are pulling together data to present, could you pull together data of the size of the town when you do it? Because sometimes I think that a smaller town has the opportunity to have more control over their budget, and maybe those decisions are being made because of the size of the community. So if you could to get that information to us, that would be great.
Okay. Anyway, yes, John.
I'd suggest to Lincoln that if he's up for the challenge, he could practice on us on Monday night before he talks to the Selectmen about the consolidated budget approach. I did have, I guess, one concern. We've seen from the Capital Group pretty much everything approved on merit, but with the understanding that there was no concern about being able to fund it. I think at some point, both of our committees are going to need to come to some, either come to an agreement or disagreement, but set some kind of priorities once we have an idea of how much money is going to be available for those projects.
Good thought.
Thank you, John. Very good. Anyone else? Yes, Rick. You're muted.
You're muted, Rick.
Well, I'm swallowing up on John's comment, you know, just I am a little concerned about using $593 and kind of somewhat derailing our capital plan. But understandably, we don't have, again, the all of the information. Hopefully, that the Regional School District will convene again and come to some understanding to perhaps lessen the blow to both towns with respect to the to the assessment. And Lincoln, with that, I think you mentioned that that would then reinstate some available funds for capital expenditure.
Correct. So if the school committee reduced the assessment to the amount that was envisioned last week at their meeting last week, that would then entail under this recommend, under this proposed budget in front of you, rather than the use of $593,837 in free cash, instead, it would it would envision using $123,721 in free cash. And that would allow to to pursue the entirety of the envisioned capital plan, with the exception of the DPW building and with the exception of $21,464. And that is something we'd have to work on to figure out, you know, where that remainder may come from. One possibility is, I spoke with Selectman Evans about this the other day regarding Community Preservation Act monies, that is, the town, you know, the townspeople voted to accept that. Just the year 2022 will be the first year that those that assessment will occur. And so I think there's a possibility of for of doing the playground, the $29,000 and change for the playground. And that would that would require putting that off a little bit, but it would allow for that. We do have a small capital stabilization fund that we certainly, you know, have been hus, we've been husbanding and you know, building that up over years, but that is a possibility for a small portion of the capital plan. So, you know, to be continued dependent on what happens with the school assessment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lincoln.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. As as I've been on this committee, I think for the last almost six years, the one the one comment I just want to make is, you know, if we've, I feel like we've been spinning our wheels trying to get our capital taken care of. We've had to use free cash, we've had to dip into stabilization for the schools a few years ago. I understand the situation. I just hope that we can get to a point where we can really establish a good way to fund what the citizens probably need and want to see in the town. I'm just not a big fan of balancing operational budgets with free cash and stabilization. I think we, nobody really likes to do that. I just hope we can get on the right path somehow. Thank you.
Right, thank you, certainly. And anyone else? Well, okay. We'll go back to work and we'll we'll be meeting again next week. And to further our discussion of of Lincoln's plan, and Lincoln, you'll be rehearsing your plan with the Finance Committee on on Monday evening.
Thank you, John.
I'd like to thank you all for, thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to go into executive session. So I'm going to need a vote to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Exception 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and I so declare.
I move my motion, Dan.
There a second?
Second, Justin.
Okay, Justin. Okay, Justin.
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, executive session will be held in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com. Members of the public will not be able to physically attend. No broadcast of the executive session will be made. Okay, well, we're in executive session.
Okay, and the recording is going again.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And Justin?
Yes.
I will vote yes, and we'll see you all next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.